Washington project. So with that, let's dive in. I'm hoping everybody read the memo that I put in for background. We have, I'm just gonna dive right in. We received the bids for the right-of-way work and the funding that I have available is not enough to cover the full cost of the work that came through. We had somewhat anticipated this, so it wasn't too much of a surprise. We knew that we were gonna try and sell the lots for an amount, which is why we're here tonight. It went out to bid in July. Depending on what you guys decide tonight, you would see the bids and make a decision next council meeting, and then we can proceed with the work as needed. So the lowest bid came in at about 830,000. We have 18 lots that need the work completed. It is right-of-way work. It's the laterals. It is the grading of the lots. It's the stormwater preparation for it. So once this work gets completed, those lots are 100% ready to go, ready to be built on. They should not have to do anything else besides potentially like internet or any other utilities that we don't necessarily have a say in. That's up for the other companies to decide, sort of things. Although, we have made contact with those utility companies to let them know that this development's coming in in case they wanna put something in while we're doing our own work. With that being said, as you can see, we have a cost per lot at just under 46,000. We have Habitat is still very interested in doing nine of those lots. When, just for a little bit of background, when we had started the conversations with Habitat, and please remember that I wasn't here for that period, so I can only say for certain, the one meeting that I attended with some Habitat representatives, the number that we provided to them as our best guess at the time was 25,000 per lot, is what we would sell the lots for to both Habitat and any developer that would do our nine lots. With that being said, with the numbers coming in a little bit higher than we were anticipating, and the funding that I have available to spend for the rest of it, our suggestion is to sell the lots at 35,000, both to Habitat and the developers. That leaves us just a little under 200,000 that we would have to use CIP for. I have a, and that number might be different based off what Julie gave me, because the housing CIP that I have is actually allocated to a lot of projects, including Corridor and other developments that we have going on, so it kind of ebbs and flows, and also potentially gets refilled next year, depending on what council or finance or the city manager decides. So, you know, but what I have right now, because this is a bill that would come up that we would wanna pay, is what our best suggestion is to take care of that financing. We looked at a good chunk of options. We played with GPW CIP possibly to try and cover some of the costs there, but unfortunately, GPW work, the way that we pay for those projects, they have to be on the public side, public-facing benefits. This is private. It's private laterals. It's private grading, private stormwater, so it wouldn't qualify for that type of funding. We did play with borrowing with the state trust fund as a possibility, which is also an option, but if we could cover the cost in a different way, it just didn't seem to make sense to go out for a borrowing of that amount. We have the CIP for Habitat, or sorry, for Washington and workforce housing. And then, of course, if the Habitat developers purchase a lot, we have those funds that can offset the cost as well. So that's what we were suggesting. Does anybody have any questions about this part?
No, I'm not bigoted about ARPA, because we talked about ARPA briefly, Julie.
Oh, yes.
I don't know the answer. I didn't have time to look at the funding for it, but I, somebody asked me this question. I didn't know how to answer it. So there were ARPA funds allocated to Washington in some way, shape, way, shape or form, correct? And part of that, if my memory serves, was that we approved it under the guise that it was a city ARPA project, but we approved it because Habitat was on board with it, quote unquote? It's one of these things?
Yeah. Actually, don't forget to talk into your microphone.
But I don't worry, Julie, do you know the dollar amount? And do you know what of those funds has been allocated into what? I have a lot of questions. Sorry.
No, that's all right. $75,000 of ARPA funds was designated for the Washington school site purchase.
Okay.
So those funds were 100% used for to purchase the land.
Yep.
And that's not being included in this per lot average?
That was the whole line, whole ARPA line item to Washington was 75 grand. My memory was different, but like I said, I thought it was more than that.
It got more, it was more than that, and then it got reallocated when they realized it had to be contracted or signed agreement by December 31st, 2024, and then we reallocated it to a different project because we couldn't get any agreement or contract signed by December 31st, 2024.
Bummer. Because then we found out it was really later than that, right? Because we opened a second round, and it could've been different, so we could've had funding a different way for, yeah.
I just, it was a different project that we needed it for, so it was kind of a...
That's why my memory remembers it being a different dollar amount than 75 grand, because it was, right?
Yes. There was originally two line items for Washington schools.
Yep.
The one got reallocated to a different community development project because we needed that December 31st.
Got it. So that was first round, right? Now, second round of ARPA.
Was it Corridor?
I think so, with contaminated soil.
Yes.
When, yeah, so they came back really high because of contaminated soil.
Yes.
Got it. So in other words, all of the ARPA funding that was allocated to this has been spent, and for all intents and purposes, it was only 75 grand for the purchase of the land?
Yes.
Got it.
Yes. How does council feel about the 35,000? We priced other lots that are ready to build as close as we could to this size, and numbers were significantly higher than that, so we feel like we are already potentially offering a deal in it. We could try and offset it more, subsidize the cost more. I'm just not sure on the, how to fund it, so.
I'm worried a little bit about the restrictions that we're already possibly putting on this project in terms of what we, who we want to own these things, the, where the equity is supposed to land.
Yes.
I don't know if there's actually even gonna be a question at the end of this thing, but like, that's been a concern of mine from the beginning, and I know some of the stuff you've laid out in the second part of what you wanna talk about, and maybe I'm a little ahead of it.
Hold on.
But it all goes together. If we make these things more attractive, the likelihood that they sell is higher. If we make them less attractive in terms of the upfront cost...
My only point was to say, we know some of, some undeveloped, fully-ready-to-go lots are going between 80 to 100,000, so this is still less than that. Any good developer that builds homes would, should hopefully be able to look at this and say, okay, I still have some cost savings here. That doesn't necessarily have to go 100% to the homeowner, but will offset some of their building costs when they actually build the homes themselves.
And I guess, and just one other, it's just more of a comment, only because of the time on RDA and when we try to offload lots, or we have people interested in lots, that's always where they, they have no interest in actually paying for the lot. They always want it for free. Every developer.
Everybody wants it for free.
Right? Everybody wants everything for free, but it really comes to the city-owned, you know, shovel-ready type project lots.
We could do it for free and look at-
And I'm not suggesting that.
-state trust fund borrowing as an option to pay for it. I just don't have the CIP to pay for it like we had originally thought at the start.
Has there been a conversation with Habitat yet on the change from 25 to 35?
Yes. I've kept Tom Simon, the executive director, I believe his title is, appraised. As soon as I got the bids in, I let him know, because he had reached out and wanted that information, just trying to keep that communication going, and I had let him know about the council workshop that was tonight, invited him to attend in case he had any insight that he wanted to share. He did provide me with a little bit of their timeline, and I didn't print it, but I believe they were planning on eventually building next year and then finishing up the homes in 2027 and '28. So he knew that I was going to suggest to council tonight 35,000 for the lot.
Did he give you any indication as to how they feel about that number versus the previous number, which I know wasn't set in stone, or it was just a number?
Uh, not really. When I had sent him the original bid documents where it was the 48,000 potentially per lot, if we didn't offer any sort of subsidies, he did mention that that seemed a little high and was hoping we could go through the bids and see if there was anything else we could kind of pull out that was public benefit, and potentially the city would cover that portion of it. But the majority of the work is really lot-specific, so it would be very difficult to do that.
How does that impact the final price? Do we still think it's gonna be workforce housing?
I do, and that's gonna be a couple of my next slides. So, this is just a quick slide to point out, this is the median information you guys wanted us to use from the US Census. So you're gonna pay most attention to this column, and it goes down by person in the house. So the average income of one person in our community is 38,000, and we're using this column to make our income determinations on whether or not they would qualify for this. So if somebody's interested in purchasing one of these nine homes, they can only be within 100, 200, 20% of this income. If they're over it, they're not qualified then, because they make too much. So that's the number. Don't forget, we have that 61, 929 that we polled as the average, but then we, council was okay with us going by the number within the households to determine whether or not they would qualify. So what the next slide is gonna focus on is four-person household average is 106,000. And I just had one of our finance consultants, not, not finance department, do a quick analysis of if they're at 80% of that price range, or 100%, 120, 140, HUD goes to 140. We don't have to go 140. What would be the best guess as to what they could afford for a property or a loan? And keep in mind, this is extremely conservative, based off of how homes are sold, banking, options that are out there and available, and a lot of it's dependent upon credit, interest, insurance. This was our most conservative guess. So even at 100% of the 106, they could afford potentially 273. We expected the cost of the homes straight billed to be around 260, 270, and that was, again, a high estimate, trying to build in a little bit of flexibility there. So if we make the lots at a decent price, there's definitely the possibility of them being sold at a reasonable amount. That being said, we don't have the ability really to subsidize if the builders don't meet those metrics, so this information would be included in the RFP. We, I know we talked a little bit about potentially setting a cap for what the home should be sold for. I don't know if that's the best route. I like the idea of just having the income requirements, and then we come in and verify that they qualify for it that way. Does that make sense? Other, other municipalities have said it and said, we want you to build nine homes, and they have to be sold between 300 and 325. And then they basically cap the amount of profit that the builder could make while still keeping them affordable within the community. I just feel like that raises a lot of wiggle room, especially if we want the homeowners to have insight into their homes, if they wanna make modifications or adjustments, increase some things, you know, there's just, it creates a lot of legalities that we'd have to be careful with. Not to say we can't, but I think we have a strong enough guidance in place already by having the income levels as the set. Plus, we also have, you know, they have to be a current Oshkosh resident, making sure that it's actually impacting somebody in the community. I feel that if they're ready to do it and in the right place, they could easily get one of these homes.
Julie, I have a question for you. Hopefully you can do math. That would not be the answer. Hopefully you can do math relatively quickly on this question. That would not be the answer. But I can see how my long pause made it seem awkwardly. Awkward pause. So, okay, let's just say home value 275, 275,000. What would be the city's share, roughly, of the property tax bill for that?
That's a good question.
I'm gonna help back into how much we should or shouldn't subsidize on the front end, by basically saying, we pick what ROI is gonna be. It's gonna be five years, it's gonna be 10 years, and then that's just what it is. Can I get where I'm going with this?
Yeah. Let me, let me pop my spreadsheet.
That's just a value judgment of what do we think is a reasonable ROI on...
While she's doing that, if you guys are okay, I could still talk about some other things, and we'll let Julie work on that.
Can I play back what you said, though, about the income caps?
Sure.
So if I made $106,000 a year?
Yes.
We're gonna require, the city's gonna require that from me in order to move into the home, but the builder could build the house at 350, and I can't afford it?
That's why we would make sure the builder is aware of this. They would have to know that there's income requirements, so what, however they choose to build that home, they have to make sure that they're still able to sell those homes to people within these income brackets. I think it's feasible, but that's why we would also include the little caveat that says you can go higher, but just don't all price yourself out of the people we want to reach in the community. That's something they have to be aware of.
I guess what happens if they try to sell it out of the price range?
We would have an agreement with them that they can't. Oh, as long as they, as long as they have somebody that meets that income requirement. I mean, we could put a cap. I just feel that that gets a little more complicated. You absolutely could put a cap.
I had the same question about recourse, just in case that happens, but I understand where you're coming from. It's hard to say that won't happen necessarily, because we don't know.
They could.
But making it, saying that it has to be affordable is a moving target to a degree, right? Because we have the income requirements there, but you're saying that we can-
They have the income requirements, and some bank is willing to give them a loan for 325.
For more, sure.
Then that, what are we to say? You can't go over 300?
The buyer then can stretch their budget after the cap.
That's up to the buyer's choice, yes. Or they can have money already set aside.
Yep.
Totally possible. I don't wanna price them out of it just because they were better prepared.
But this family of four can't make more than 128,000 dollars.
Well, that's up to you guys, if you want, where you wanna cap it. My suggestion would be 120% at 127, but we could also cap it at 100, or we could go as high as 140. I don't know if I feel that's worth it at this point for affordable within Oshkosh, but that was also some guidance I'm asking. Do you want it capped at 100% or 120?
I think 80 to 120 is what we set all along.
Yep, and I agree.
I was leaning towards 120. Everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Thumbs up?
And I, I can give you an answer. I do understand the reasoning of not putting a cap on it, and I'm fine with that. I get it. I think you wind up in that scenario very rarely, and I'm not, I get the concern, but I don't think we wind up there. And I do like the ability of a buyer to be able to get more if they can afford more. So it's not to us to say what they can afford, as long as they qualify from an income perspective.
Yeah, I feel like we just get in a little weird territory, and opens us up to other issues if they say, but we can afford it. We wanna go higher. And we're like, let's be put in an agreement in place that says a developer can't, so.
Yeah, because it also depends on what other choices they make, what kind of cars they wanna have parked in their driveway, and what, you know.
There's a lot. We want them to have some say in the structure, and if they feel they can afford to put in some of those higher amenities, that's entirely up to them. If a bank says they can afford it, that's up to them.
And to go back to Matt's question, I wanted to pull last year's tax spreadsheet so I could give you, based off of last year's tax rate. So based off of the 2025 tax rate, it would have been approximately $2,200 for the city portion of their tax bill.
For a home assessed at 275?
Yes.
So the body unit by 35?
Yeah, 15 a year.
15 years, we do 35 per lot, is that?
I don't do math.
Difference is only 10. The subsidy is essentially 12, so, yeah.
Where I was kinda going is, okay, the original thought was 25,000 a lot.
Yes.
Right now, it's saying morally 45 plus.
For the cost to get the work completed?
Yes.
Yes.
And so there's that, that's the gap that we didn't necessarily anticipate. So how do we, you know, okay, are we comfortable with 35? And then some other funding source has to cover the 10-ish, the 190,000. Is it still more like that we wanted to try to keep it at 25, and we have to find a way to keep it at that 25,000? And so that's where I was, all right, so, I have 18 lots times $2,200. 4,000, yeah, 4,000?
40?
Yeah, 38, 30,000 a year?
40 is what I'm thinking.
How many years are you okay with it taking to pay that back, if that's the way we wanna look at it? Like, we're investing, however we choose to fund it, we're investing in it, and it'll take us extra money back. Because if we don't do anything, and this thing sits empty, that's lost revenue forever.
There is no taxes being paid on it right now, so.
And there hasn't been in the past for quite a long time on this particular...
Anything is an improvement off of zero.
What was the, the full fair market cost was 48? What did I miss?
45, 45-ish.
Oh, the full cost of the work, yes, on average, was a little under 48,000. And, you know, developers would do that work and then sell the lots at a higher price to recoup that and be able to continue. So it's, what deal do we wanna strike to be able to continue doing this work? Or do we want to just cover costs? Or do we wanna try and make it easier? That's, that's where we need a little more guidance.
So Matt, the answer to your question is six years, right, if I close?
Five years.
Five years for the ROI? So I mean, and that's going from 48 to 35?
It's 46 is, because it's 45 and change, so 46.
46 to 35.
So 35 is 11.
Is five years.
2,200 a year is, is five years.
So it's infinitely better than a TIP, which is 27 years. That's how I would look at that.
I was hoping for seven and see if five.
It returns far more rapidly than every other deal we've ever made in a lot of respects.
Well, plus TIP increment is a delay.
Right.
So it's a year to come in, but, yeah.
All right, fine, 28 years.
We, we played with the idea. I had actually pitched it to Kelly when I first came here of, do we wanna make a TIP in this area and see if we can try and recoup it that way? And, but it, I mean, then you're getting all of the tax bills and ways. Didn't make sense. Not that type.
So by my, by that math, I can give you answers. I mean, I think that's great. I think 35 sounds-
You're okay with 35?
I'm totally okay with 35. If we think, I mean, if there's an appetite for 25, if we think that makes it more attractive and more affordable, I'm still okay with the time period for the return as it sits anyway, because it, it's a good project.
There's no guarantee that any developer is going to be interested in doing this. If they run the numbers and say, nope, I don't think it's gonna work.
Right.
I may be coming back to you and saying, we have to go lower, or offer it at zero. You know, it is what it is. But I really think 35 is a good number for what we're hoping to get accomplished there.
I'm, I'm good there.
I think it's feasible.
I'm good with 35. I would be happy if you told me we had a way to do it at 30, you know, 35. I'll sleep tonight.
Agreed.
Matt?
You okay? Do you have enough nodding heads?
I do. Okay.
Questions on the second part, though? Just to make sure, we didn't lock in your second part of your, that's one part.
The 80 to 120?
120.
It was, that's, that was the only part of that that you needed, was 80 to 120? That's the only thing you needed guidance on?
On this part, yes. Yes. So then we'll get into the last little bit. Yep, yep, there's more questions to come. We're putting together our RFP for the master builder that's going to do the nine lots on the city's side. So we have a couple of other questions that we need cleared up. We had played with the idea of putting in the equity clause. Do we want it to be five years or 10 years? We never exactly landed at the last housing, and then we had to end really quickly, so we skimmed over some of that stuff very fast. Just to kind of remind you of the kinda, the requirements that we've got is, they have to be an Oshkosh resident. We played with the idea of owner-occupied clause versus allowing rentals, but if we're talking about affordable housing, I like, I still really like the idea of having that owner-occupied clause there. No selling within five years. If they do, we receive its repayment clause. They have to pay us back a certain percentage within of what we've invested within the property, and that would be some of that 35,000, or the 20, whatever was remaining in the, the amount that we put in it. So there's some, there's that option. We would put a lien on it so that we're in second position, obviously, so that if something goes wrong and doesn't happen, we can get the property back and make sure that we can still see it developed moving forward. And then, of course, we're gonna have the income requirements. So those are the, the main meat and potatoes requirements that we're putting in the RFP. But there's some cleanup that we have to do. We didn't settle on the five to 10 years, so there was definitely a, I felt multiple counselors were comfortable with five, multiple counselors were comfortable for 10. It's really, in our mind, it's just staff management, so we just have to make sure that we have people available to track it and make sure that it's still there. It would still be recorded legally. There's all sorts of stuff there, but do we want a time limit on the building of it? Do we wanna put in that they have to build within two years or three years? One year?
I don't wanna take control of this, but why don't I take control of this? So why don't we go bullet, like?
Bullet point, like bullet point?
Yeah. Five or 10 years?
Yep.
Okay. Five years?
I'm five to five.
Same.
It does make it a little easier for staff to manage.
I think locking someone into a home, we're trying not to do certain things, but trying, but locking someone in for a decade, I don't know where I'm gonna be.
I think you'd have three surprised kids by then.
Right?
I've never owned a home for 10 years.
Life could change significantly in that amount of time for anybody, so.
I think five is a good number as well.
I have.
Okay.
Okay. Do we want a time limit? Do we wanna say that we want these properties built by a specific date? How much time do we wanna give them? They can always put in the option to extend, et cetera, but my suggestion was two years.
If you might.
Sure.
Yep.
Two. Okay. We already went over the next bullet point. Do we want to provide any additional financial incentives in the building process itself, such as the possibility of reducing building fees or a variety of things? I didn't really see a need for it, but we could always explore some options.
What's the rough building permit cost to build a single-family home right now, roughly?
Do you know that? I have no idea.
Maybe that's something-
I could've done it in my-
I don't know, yes, but it's something at least know if we're gonna make a decision on that part.
I hope that that's not a reason why somebody would-
It wouldn't be, but it's still, it's part of, it's part of the whole thing, and we're trying to control the sell price to limit, we're supposed to be honest, to limit developers' profit. We are. And I'm a free-market capitalist, and I struggle with this, but we have a righteous cause and a reason to do it.
100%.
So knowing that would be helpful, I think.
Okay.
But also, Julie, I keep coming back to, we have all these other grants that we use for the neighborhood grant, the curb appeal thing.
Yeah.
If there's any way to utilize-
Oh, absolutely. We're still gonna encourage involvement within those programs as well.
I think that's where, like, if we can put somebody into one of those, I think that would be a good use of those funds.
Absolutely.
Sometimes we know that those are wildly underutilized, some of them, not all. The curb appeal, one that goes through COHNI is well-used, I know, but I think that would be inappropriate.
We have a lot of programs available already.
And if we have to update programs and, then suggest, you don't need to do nothing, but make some suggestions-
No.
-as we go through that process, like, how do we, how do we make sure that those, that this, that thing can actually qualify for it?
That's my concern, is Habitat properties typically qualify because of the LMI versions of it, whereas affordable housing would be above that. Under HUD, HUD only does 80% and lower. So people within our metrics probably wouldn't qualify for our programs unless we did some sort of modification to it. Very possible.
Something to consider, maybe you just have to come back to us on that part.
Okay. That's easily something that I could send you guys an email and say, this was what we're kind of looking at, is some options for other incentives. Just yea or nay, is good.
Was there any traction? The county was working on a program that might help with down payments. Have we talked about that briefly, or what, are there, is there any more movement on that? Probably not quite yet.
I haven't heard anything there. They were, they were looking at a couple of different housing options, and I haven't heard anything on that yet.
I can try and circle back and see if there's any movement there as well for collaboration.
I've been keeping an eye on meetings that are going through, seeing if anything pops up, but I haven't seen anything yet.
I think most of the, like, are sold on Oshkosh and, like, repair programs, I think are all like 120 or maybe even 140% of median income. So I think that would touch most of the, like, workforce.
As long as it's not CBG funded, yep, we have an ability to go a little bit higher in the metrics. Okay. Size of the homes. Do we wanna set that? Do we not?
I think it's ridiculous to not build two baths.
My suggestion is gonna be three bathroom, or sorry, three bedrooms, two baths. And if one of those bedrooms is a basement bedroom with an egress window, that's fine. The idea was also-
Full by code.
To include the housing specs that were just approved by RDA. It's very basic requirements to make sure that a standard is applied to all of the homes that are built. Habitat has the standards. They haven't mentioned that they had any issues with it. I think they're pretty, very, very basic. And of course, all building codes and other regulations would need to be followed, but there would be requirements to have some form of a basement as well as some form of a garage, and all of it should match the aesthetics of the neighborhood. We want to make sure that these 18 homes are blending into the community. So that was the purpose behind that. Nobody's got any concerns with that? Okay, we'll keep it moving. Now, the last one that I have for Washington is related to the ownership of the lots themselves. There was the idea that council wants staff very involved in this process, even- There was the idea that council wants staff very involved in this process, even potentially selecting the nine people that would be moving into the lots. I'm just gonna be really blunt, I don't have the staff or time to do that. My suggestion would be to give these metrics to the builder and say, we will come in when you're ready to close and verify all of these things, and as long as we give the okay, you can close. So they would buy the lots, they would transfer the lots into the builders, the insurance would be handled by the builders, and then we just come in and verify before they hand them over to a property owner. Okay, because that was some pretty serious legal and insurance concerns that popped up awfully quick when we were talking about the program itself, so. Not to say that that's not a possibility, we couldn't look into the future, it's just with this one, I want to make sure that we do it really well, and I do not have my own time to invest in it the way I would want to, but I'm very happy to come in and verify everything that needs to occur.
I just think it's so easy for us to set the rules and then let somebody else do.
Yes, plus, I really don't want to be the person picking the nine, that's gonna be really hard, and I'm a sucker, so I'm gonna be saying...
You shouldn't run for elected office, I would say. Our clinic's much alone.
I want to help everybody. Okay, with talk of the future, let's dive into our last slide, because Washington is only the first step. We've talked a lot about trying to get more housing in our community, we all know that this is a necessity, in particular affordable housing. So, I'm not gonna ask any questions of you concerning Farmington tonight, but I am gonna lay that little seed in your brains that we're gonna have to think about. Washington is technically nine lots that we are building. Farmington's 31, and Farmington does not have roads, so we have to do a considerable amount of prep work before we are gonna be able to sell those lots to a developer. We're talking literally building the roads, the mains, the lateral stormwater grading right away, all of it has to be included, and the best guess for the first phase is about 2 mil. So, I don't have 2 mil in my CIP, I, I don't think we could sell the lots before we have the roads, I don't know, maybe, but we are gonna have to get a little creative with this development in the future, so you're gonna be seeing me again at some point, but this is not anything we're gonna accomplish this year. I want to take our time with Washington, make sure we do it right, and then use that as a benchmark to move forward with other housing programs within the community. Okay? Okay, that's all I had.
On that one, just one small thing, the road, the finished road. You go through any new development in town or out of town, nobody's putting in the roads until a certain threshold of houses are built. So in terms of the cash outlay upfront, it's not a necessary outlay that we have to make before we even sell a single lot, just that we have other options to make sure that they're accessible, they're destructible, even while they're habitable. But while it may be something we do need outlay, it doesn't have to be that early in the process.
For sure, that quote did not include roadwork, it included the stormwater preparations and the grading and the mains placement, so it was the very basics starting, because it also includes, you know, for sure, the top portion, if you remember, Farmington was kind of two parcels that were a little off.